We got our.
To leave this state for Friday, did you?
I know, I was trying to arrange it right now because I can't. I know, I could, I'll do it. I don't know what I'm about to do, you know, absolutely. I'm on my twenty-four hours.
I work mostly.
That's true.
A church.
I'll see. I may have to stop out.
I had the one we had the training and I want to.
Yeah, what time do you want, right?
Just so you know, we are live, so everybody can go.
I think it's perfect.
This is when you usually there.
Yeah.
I just want to get.
Um, so you could. Like hit the back.
Anything to do with.
You know. You need to.
Alright. I know it's supposed to be kind of nice out too, so I mean, hang on, I've probably got work going in. I don't have any accounts.
Alright, everybody, welcome to the town chairless council meeting for April sixteenth. Please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a call.
Nate Van Horn.
Present.
Mark Pepel.
Present.
Devon Keener.
Present.
Madeline C. Barber, present.
Alright, open up here with the easement proof of hearing for three twenty-three West Pleasant Streets. Any discussion, any comments, concerns on that?
So Jeff is here, Jeff Clark, um, at three twenty-three West Pleasant, he wants to put a fence in. I did send you guys all that paperwork. Um, did you have anything else to add or?
No, it's obviously not a used easement and the neighbor and I split it mowing anyway, so. I just want to go to the middle of the easement. I don't need to go all the way to his property line. If you let me, cool. Um, but I mean, I mean, it's literally a dead space because it has like weird light poles, um, that kind of hurts the cats, so. I just want to close out the cats.
Oh, you're in.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yep, so if I could go whatever the rule is off of his line in the easement, that'd be great.
Okay.
If not, half is fine, either way.
Has been any opposition or anything or no?
Now, two houses down, there's another open easement. We have the huge big backfield anyway, so.
Yeah.
The only utilities I have are the electrical in the back that they come down the levee anyway, so.
Okay, um, any? Feedback or any opposition here? Alright, um, do we go on this or do I close it and then?
Yeah, you got, yeah, and then make motion, sign that.
Perfect.
Make a motion that we approve the easement encouragement of three twenty-three West Pleasant Street for privacy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, close the hearing and approve the, um, coach, or the, yeah, easement at three twenty-three West Pleasant Street. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
It's not that one, it's the top one.
Go ahead.
Yep. Then I will just need to see your ID and then have you sign it and then you are good to go. Thank you very much.
Yes.
If you can just print, or since printed and then sign right above it.
Oh.
Alright, and then give you back all this stuff and you can take it over to planning building and get that.
Cool. Thanks guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Alright, approval of meeting minutes for April second, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion that we approve.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, for the approval of meeting minutes for, from April second, twenty twenty-five. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you sign that one, Nate?
No, I, yeah, because I, I'll sign that one.
I just need to.
Alright, at this time, we'll open up for poll of comments or anything not already on the printed agenda. Yes, sir.
Hi.
How you doing?
Hey.
Good. The Suicide Awareness and Prevention Task Force has secured a grant to train two instructors for QPR. So now there are local resources to do QPR classes here. We do need them. So if you know groups that want that, organizations, churches, um, to justify the grant a little bit, we need to book some things. So if you hear of people that want to know more about that, let us know. Let the task force know and we'll provide that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Best way to reach out to him on Facebook or what's the best way to reach out to him?
They're on Facebook.
Okay. That right has contact information then on there?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Uh, Chair Busco's suicide awareness, I don't know, if you put that much in, it comes up because it's this long.
They're doing a, aren't they doing the walk coming up in May?
The walk is May tenth, so yeah, we'll be ready to, if people want those trainings, we can sign them up right there.
Fantastic. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, whole business, uh, grant administration agreement with Biggs for Turtle Meadows.
Um, when the bond was passed, it was mentioned that, uh, he needed grant administration services as well. So that is what that agreement is. He has already signed it, um, and he's the one who wrote it and just needs your signature. And your, well, your approval and then your signature.
Yep. So, um, so you're.
And again, this puts no liability on the Chair Busco.
No, it says that he's going to be paying us for the service, so.
Okay.
And sure, we're having a lot of basis cover and everything.
It puts liability, it's, uh, me, so.
Perfect, okay.
Perfect, put the liability on Madeline.
Make a motion, we approve the grant administration agreement with, uh, between Ideal Biggs and ourselves for Turtle Meadows Grant?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those who favor say aye.
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 Zach, you want to take that back and then get me, and then just send out copies of all the signs? Thank you.
There it is, ma'am.
Alright, new business, Wiltley County Council.
The guy that nobody knows. Thanks for allowing me to be here tonight. Sorry about the eye patch. I'm living out foreigner song double vision, which is why I have them. It's either this or choose a road I'm going to drive down the road on. My name is Jim Johnson. I'm the, uh, new executive director of Whitley County Council on aging. Been in the job for about seven weeks now. Um, I don't know if any of you have a chance to meet, uh, Leslie Blakely, the one previous. She and I worked together years ago. I was actually her boss years and years ago. So I worked for Three Rivers Federal Credit Union for about twenty-five years and, uh, as I said, came on board just about seven, seven weeks ago. I just really quickly just wanted to say, uh, just to bring some awareness to what we do. If you don't know, um, you know, we take care of seniors here in, uh, Whitley County. Take care of them through a lot of different ways. Well, first of all, let me say, we are not a nursing home and we're not an adult daycare. A lot of people have that perception of, of us. We provide nutrition services. We have lunch Monday through Friday. It's only seven dollars for a home cooked meal. Um, requires forty hour reservation and actually anybody can eat there. Um, you don't have to be a senior. Uh, we also deliver a lot of meals. Um, in fact, every day we've got a group of volunteers to take our meals out to seniors who can't make it in. What I love seeing is a lot of our seniors come in for lunch and Sheila cooks a big portions. She cooks like my mom used to cook. And so they get to take leftovers home and it's really great. It's all home cooked meals. Uh, we do wellness activities. We had the Purdue Extension team there today doing some chair aerobic type things and some educational things. We've got euchre going on and. I never pronounce this right, Ma-Jong. The ladies yell at me because I screw it up all the time. We just have all kinds of things for, for, for folks. Um, and then as you probably know, we have Whitley County Transit. We're a public transportation organization for Whitley County. Anybody can ride the buses or the vans. Um, we take vets to VA hospital in Fort Wayne and down into Marion. We take dialysis parents, uh, patients over to Fort Wayne or over to Warsaw since we don't have a dialysis clinic here. Um, we're actually contracted with, uh, Columbia City Schools to take some school kids there. We pick up where their buses can't get to. And again, that's a forty-eight hour thing, but that is for anybody. We take a lot of folks, uh, from a program called Passages. They're wheelchair bound. Uh, our buses have lifts and our vans have ramps. Um, all of our bus drivers are trained on how to strap them down so they don't go rolling when we go rolling. So, um, it's, it's a great service. A lot of people don't know about that. That's not just for seniors, um, and most seniors ride for free. So as we say, we take people places. Um, and then we have a facility that can be rented out. We can seat up to a hundred and fifty people. We can even provide the cooking. Um, I met with Sheila today on that. Um, most, if you didn't know, most of our funding comes from NDOT through the transportation arm. But then we also rely very heavily on donations and things like that. If you and I heard people talking about Facebook, you can follow us on Facebook. Our center is called The Woodlands and that's how you would find us on there. Um, it's a pretty active group of people. I'm very proud to be a part of that. The other thing is, um, and I've already started doing this, I'm making myself available to come and pitch this to churches as well. Because we're always looking for volunteers, um, obviously donors. I don't make a big push on that on Sundays, but I was at Saturn Christian Church, um, two Sundays ago. They didn't have a pastor, so I shared about us and then I preached, so I get into that too. Um, and I'll be heading over to, I don't know if you know Larry Barr, um, I think he's from Columbia. No, he's up Eel River Community. It's called Community Bible. Stay up in the far northwest corner of Whitley County and I think I'm going to end up being a tourist church about eventually and I've got about four or five others. They're just waiting to coordinate their schedules, but thank you so much for allowing me to be here. If you ever have any questions at all, don't hesitate. We've got visitor packets, so if you know somebody, I just want to share this. I was talking to the, um, Whitley County Health Department, um, guy Scott. He said last year in Whitley County, there were seven seniors that were found dead in their homes, seven. Um, and one that he went specifically to when he got there, um, the gentleman's wife had died years ago in that generation. The wife did all the cooking. So in the kitchen, he said there was, um, cupcake wrappers, Twinkie wrappers, fridge full of pop. And I said, well, yes, he was diabetic. He said, yep. I said, was he undernursed or was he malnourished? He goes, no, he's undernursed. We could have addressed that. If he didn't drive, we could address that. We could have got him there. University of Michigan did a study several years ago. They've been doing it for about five or six years ago and they're, it's a study on seniors and loneliness and isolation. And, um, in Whitley County, we have about sixty-nine hundred people who are sixty-five years old or older. And, and their current study, thirty-five percent of seniors, um, suffer from loneliness and isolation. That translates in Whitley County to about twenty-three hundred people. So I'm on a personal mission to find that need. So if it's that neighbor down the street that nobody really knows about. Or if you live out in the country, it's like, yeah, we never see that guy coming out of the house, you know, share with them. There's places they can come and, uh. People just, people just simply don't know what we've been doing and we've been doing it for over fifty years now. So, um, I'd appreciate if you could help us get the word out because we do some super things and we got a great group of people there. And we, from haircuts to great meals, just, just some great socialization.
Have you been to our senior, we have a senior group that meets like Heroes every Monday?
No, did not know about that.
Ten AM, ten AM, um, that, this might be a great thing to, to coordinate with them.
Could you either get them or drop my name? My name is.
Lisa Khan.
Lisa Khan.
Yeah, Lisa owns Heroes.
Here, let me give you my card. Any questions at all about what we do? I really do appreciate you allowing me to be here.
Yeah, no, dear, not, uh, appreciate you coming and, yes, looks like you sure.
You guys have a lot of offer a lot, so, yeah.
A ton.
Who was that guy saying? The guy that used to come to all the council meetings and he always brought.
Yeah, I, I remember that, but I don't.
Packs and stuff. It was like pre-COVID and then, never really seen anyways since then.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember being all this though. Maybe there was and I forgot, but.
Yeah.
The main thing stuck out to me was the meals, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot here.
And I put this list together as I've been learning about the job as well, you know, so I like, we, we, we do that, we do that, we do that. And this isn't even everything. This is, this is kind of a highlight, so.
What is the facility rental fee?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
What's the?
What is the facility rental fee?
I don't know. My, my, uh, my board treasurer and I are working on a huge NDOT report right now and I said, what is it? He said, you know, I don't know. So call that number and Gabby, our front desk person will tell you.
And actually, I've been to a baby shelter. It's a nice facility.
Yeah, and we're hoping to grow. That's one of our goals. I think by next year, we're going to have a cap on campaigns. Just want to grow a pavilion and some more, we, we're out of space right now. I'd like to get a computer lab going for folks. So I'm going to be down at Whitco on, on Monday to talk about how we can get their high school kids involved with what we do as well, so.
Alright, right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, uh, approval of payout twenty-six for Project Day from Crosby.
Alright, so this payout, um, includes twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for doors, frames, hardware, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for paint and coatings. W two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars, seventy-five cents for lab casework. Thirteen thousand, eighty dollars plumbing above ground HVAC sheet metal, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, fifty cents. Electrical in the existing lab building, thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Electrical underground, fifty-seven thousand, fifty dollars. And then general work allowances, general work conditions, twenty-eight thousand. Total work for this payout, two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-four cents. Amount of application, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, ninety-eight cents.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve payout number twenty-six.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to pay app, uh, twenty-six, Project Day from Crosby for the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, ninety-eight cents. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
Um, so this is just some approval to changes made in the personnel manual. Uh, we, you guys approved, uh, HSA contributions last year in a public meeting. Um, but it was not in our personnel manual, so I want to make sure that was in there since I was putting that in there. Um, we did add a little bit more clarification to the staff policies, things that we already do, um, but we just made it abundantly clear that it was. And elected officials and dependents and, you know, that sort of thing, so. So the only real change is just the addition of the HSA contributions. Everything else is just adding language to make things more definitive.
That's why I was just being. Make a motion, uh, to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six, change, changes the personal manual.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six. All those who favor say aye.
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 Devon, you said you did that, right? Yeah, thank you.
Alright, uh, discussion of April's penalties.
Um, so I did let you guys know that we were contacted by several residents that they did not receive their April bills until earlier this week. Um, we made sure that it wasn't an issue with the printer. Um, again, about half the resident, we started receiving people's payments and their new bills like on March thirty-first. So, um, so we had no idea that there was even an issue until late last week when people started calling and saying that they hadn't received their bills. Uh, it was not a problem with the printer. It wasn't a problem on our end. We're one hundred percent convinced it's the Indianapolis Distribution Center for the USPS, which is. Being federally investigated.
Some issues that are.
Yes, um, so I am not usually one to ask to, you know, forego penal, you know, penalties, um, especially if it's a mail issue. But since it was, I mean, it was probably, I would guess, half to, you know, three quarters of people in town did not receive bills on time. Um, that I, I would like for you guys to approve that we do not do penalties this month, um, and then go back to, to penalties on the twenty-first next month.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I don't have any issue with that.
For sure. Make a motion that we, um. Prevent from.
Dismissed.
Um, filing for April penalties because of the US Postal Service issue.
Second. I have a motion and a second, uh, to not have any April penalties. All those who favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, approval of the replat for Lee Jacobs.
Um, so the Mylar that you have in front of you, that is for a replat of Lee Jacobs addition that's, um, property outside of town limits. It's on nine hundred. They, um, were at the plan commission two months ago, I'm going to say, and we just now got the Mylar this week. So, um, they're just splitting their lot into two, so then their son can belong, so. But yeah, it was approved by the plan commission, um, so it just needs to go to you guys next.
Motion that we approve the replat of Lee Jacobs addition.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of the Lee Jacobs addition replat. All those who favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, that's good. Alright, next up we have, uh, discussion, um, raise for Riley.
Um, so Zach is leaving as of tomorrow. Um, Riley's going to be running day to day for the foreseeable future until we can get somebody else hired. Um, I know that Zach was going to ask for a raise for Riley anyway, um, and then just didn't get to it. So I think it is time to give Riley a raise. He's been doing great from what Zach has said out of the plan. He's had a complete turnaround and. I think that, I think it's time for him to get moved up from tier two to tier one.
Yeah, I'd say he's being recommended for it and, you know.
He also wants to get his license. I talked to him today, so.
Good.
So he's going to start classes in the summer.
Make a motion that we approve the raise for Riley up to tier one. A second. I have a motion and a second, uh, to raise Riley's pay, um, to tier one. All those who favors say aye.
Aye.
Very good. One, one question, I'm, it might kind of tie into that, um, you know, with all the, uh, construction and things still going on, the plane and other places. I mean, who's kind of like, would he be the point or who's the point person? How do we, is there still, is there still very many big decisions that need made or?
Um, most big decisions go to me anyway.
Okay.
Um, and then I kind of talk it over with Zach and Riley, but it, yeah, it's me and Riley.
Yeah, cool.
So.
Alright, uh, sidewalk cost sharing program.
Um, so the town started a fifty-fifty cost sharing program, um, back in twenty twelve for sidewalk replacement. We've got probably a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy sidewalks done through that fifty-fifty cost sharing. We've had amazing buy-in. Um, you know, Stu was doing them and Stu is now gone. We haven't really done any residential sidewalks over the past five years or so. Um, but they are, there are certain areas of town and certain sidewalks that at the time that we started this, they weren't that bad and now they've gotten to be bad. Threshers in particular is not great. Um, so I kind of, I looked at what other communities were doing and, um. What they have been doing is a reimbursement program, so, you know, the town would have an application, the resident would have. It, it's actually fairly similar to our facade rate program with the chamber and with main street and everything. Um, they would submit an application with a quote. We would then approve up to fifty percent of, you know, with a max per square footage. Fee and then once they are all complete, they would submit their paid, you know, invoices to us for reimbursement. We would go out there and inspect, make sure that everything meets our specs and then, then cut them a check. Um, we have money appropriated for sidewalk maintenance. Um, the guys don't have time to do that, you know, themselves. I think that this would be a great way that we are still providing the service to our residents, but then that we're not doing the work. And did you want anything to add to that or?
No, that sounds funny. Yeah, we don't have the time to do those sidewalks.
Yeah.
So they can do it and then we just kind of come up with a good spec that we would like, what we want the finished product to be.
Right.
Yeah. That's, I don't know.
Which, which we already, we do have sidewalks, but.
Yes, we have.
At, at, you know, now, so, um, you know, it might be something that, you know, we kind of look at, maybe changes made to those, but. Um, and then put those into the application itself and have people sign off on it, so. It was something I just wanted to bring up. I just talked to your neighbor today, actually, Nate. She said that she had talked to you about it, um, about wanting hers done and then. It's been something that's been on my mind anyway, just because there are, there are several that, they weren't that bad twelve years ago. They, they're bad now, so.
Okay.
So, um, I just wanted to see if you guys were open to that and have me bring a policy and application and all that, you know, sample.
And I guess my question right now is, you know, they're impending logic cuts.
Well, I mean, we already got it, we've got it appropriated now, so if we can get something in place and get it started, you know, for the summer. We could at least get a few of them done.
A few of them done, sure.
Yeah.
Well, we've got a lot in Thresher there. I'm just, I mean, they just need done from our main holes and.
Mm-hmm.
Basically it's down from you, that intersection, that is, those aren't even any gap, right, right?
No, they're not.
And there, there's a gap in there now, so.
And I, I realize, I realize the need. I don't, I'm not questioning that at all. I'm just, I'm just worried about things coming down, but.
Yeah.
Nope, that sounds good. Yep, I'd say good. Get it all.
Okay, yeah, I will, next meeting I will have something for you guys and hopefully we can get that started up.
Alright. Alrighty, uh, department reports, Mr. Hart.
Mr. Grant, any questions for him?
Just getting busy with all the. All the warm weather stuff.
No, no, that's all going to start too. Plus all the winter stuff, we still haven't got done.
Yeah. Everything going good then? Nothing you need from us or? Alright.
Today's, uh, everybody's birthday, I would like.
Oh, happy birthday, sir.
Dinner's on you.
Mr. Scraprock.
Uh, I don't have anything really.
Uh, I don't have anything really.
Everything running pretty good, smooth?
Yeah. Yeah, pretty safe school right now, so, just in a school and working with Dave and Rob's kind of taking over for the park stuff, but they're keeping me informed on it.
Good deal.
It's going well.
Cool, cool, Mr. Krater, starting to get hopping back there tomorrow?
Yeah, it's hopping, it is. Uh, the grass is starting to grow a little bit and, uh, those two storms kind of hurt us a little bit there. Uh, we're still cleaning up some stuff there. Uh, youth league is starting to practice all over the Diamonds. Their opening day is May fourth. It's a little bit later this year. And they have about, uh, three hundred and ten or so signed up in youth league, uh, different age groups, uh, you know, from T-ball along up to, uh, thirteen, fourteen's. And, uh, other than that, uh, things are running okay, so.
Softball team's off to a good start, aren't they?
They're six and O, they're playing Manchester right now and they're down two to nothing and up to one inning, so. We'll see how things go.
Yeah, it's still good though, six and O's.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything on your end, Zach?
No.
Nothing? Mr. Keener?
I don't have anything.
Mark?
I don't.
All I have is, uh, April, on April third, Madeline and I, um, had a phone, uh, conversation with RDA about the Civic Center and they, uh, just informed us again how they've been getting a lot of heat from the state on getting that funding, um, secured and, you know, we just kind of shared where we were at, how we still, uh, you know, a lot of things are up in the air on our end, you know, from the library and stuff, so we all decided for them to, um, allocate that to, to another organization and then, so yeah, just kind of, obviously now that kind of takes us to ground zero on some stuff, so, um, yeah, that's where we're at though with that. I'm sure Madeline might have, have some more on that in her report, but.
Are you gonna be adding to that?
Hmm?
Are you gonna be adding to that?
Adding to what?
Talking about the community foundation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so right now where we're at, because we relinquish those funds, we, um, Andy is continuing to try to get the area replatted. We are having pushback from the community foundation, I know that he is going to the community foundation meeting next week, um, to discuss just the replating and the purpose of the replating, so I'm hoping that they will sign off and we can get that area replatted.
What's their concern if we're gonna pay back the money?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't. So, um, I'm not, no.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we're at right now. Once that gets replatted, I think that us, the, as a community coalition and the town, we need to have a meeting and then kind of discuss where, where we're going from here. With getting that building on the market. Getting the property, yeah, what we're doing, so, so that's kind of where we're at.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing else for me then?
Um, Turtle Meadows, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I did.
Okay.
Sorry.
Turtle Meadows, we have a tech review, um, on April twenty-ninth, so we did receive the plans last week. And, um, you know, that's where the engineer, our engineers and Jeremy and myself and everybody will be going kind of line by line of what is to expect, which means that they're probably gonna be breaking ground very, very soon. So once that goes through tech review, then, um, that means that they're very close, so. Uh, CCMG project, we did have a pre-construction meeting today, they will begin the week of May fifth. Um, I will be getting letters out either tomorrow or Monday to all the residents that are involved. They, um, will be starting on Conway and then kind of moving from there. And yeah, I will, I'll attach the schedule and everything of those. The, uh, Turtle Town Plaza project is scheduled to start on May fifth as well. I did email Spencer, I've not heard back from him. But I just emailed him today just to make sure that, cause I hadn't heard from him for a couple of weeks, just to make sure we were still on, um, schedule for that. Radio readings, we are finally up, the towers are up anyway, now we're working with our software vendor to get everything in the software. So it's talking to the towers and, um, we should be having training, we're hoping the last week of April, um, on that. And then, uh, SB one did pass and was signed by the governor. Uh, we did receive from the assessor today how much we will be losing due to, uh, business personal property tax changes starting next year. And it'll be fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents that we will be losing in tax revenue. And then the AB change is two point six seven million that we will be losing from our AB. There's also some bills that are still out, I'm not, I didn't check the status on today, um, House Bill's fourteen, I want to say it's fourteen sixty-seven. It's going to have some NIH calculation changes, so that's going to change things. Within SB one, it's changes the county lit, so we, uh, might be losing up to seven hundred thousand dollars of revenue that we personally, that we currently get from local income taxes. And, um, so yeah, it's going to be, there's a lot of unknowns right now and, uh, I'm not looking forward to my job the next few years, so.
Doesn't it increase over years? I mean, it, it changes year to year, right? The way I was understanding it.
Yeah. Yeah, I was listening to it on someone, I mean, it's very, few people seem to really understand it fully.
Yeah, the average stay in the homeowner is only two hundred and sixty-four dollars a year. I mean, but then it's going to be monumental impacts to us, to the school, I mean, to the county, it's, it's not great. And just for what, you know, I mean, twenty bucks a month?
Yeah.
That's, it's insane, so. Um, other than that, I've been at nonstop meetings like the past two weeks, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, did you hear off anybody?
Nope.
All right, thank you everybody for coming, Mr. Andrew, have a good evening.